We'll have to pledge allegiance from Vice President Davis.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Mrs. Davis. Good news to Mr. Hilton.
Okay, thank you, President Lewis. Good evening, trustees. Up tonight for some good news, I want to start with, trustees, I don't know if you know this or not, but this past Thursday, our very own Deb Followell, who's a counselor at Tecumseh Middle School, was honored by the Catherine Cobb Center as an Everyday Hero recipient. You know, this is an annual event that they recognize people in the community, and she was nominated by three local families for everything that she does in support of those around her. So, if you know Deb, there is no way that she would share this information with you, because she does not go above and beyond for her own personal recognition, but she certainly goes above and beyond in support of our families, both in and out of our schools, and I wanted to make sure that I recognized her at the table here tonight. So, moving on tonight with good news, in this section, I've affectionately named it called Community Pride in Action. So, some of this is maybe from six weeks or so ago, but nonetheless, stay with me on the Community Pride in Action theme. So, our seventh graders here recently volunteered to help take down flags as a way to show honor and respect for the fallen heroes throughout our community. These students partnered with the Tecumseh Quanis Club to show their civic spirit and keep our neighborhoods looking great. And I want to take a moment to appreciate and thank Mrs. Function, their English teacher, and Mrs. Garner, a retired math teacher, for their help and support with the kids in this service project. So, it really is inspiring to see kids out in our community taking care of others and our spaces. So, carrying on with the Community Pride in Action, and in another partnership with the Tecumseh Quanis Club, our Tecumseh Middle School eighth grade students, along with their teacher and veteran Scott McCarley, recently visited Brookside Cemetery to clean veteran headstones of, and those of their families. The eighth graders are studying, you might know this, the eighth graders during the eighth grade year, they do study the Civil War, and they visit Gettysburg and the Arlington National Cemetery at the end of the year. And I just want to give a special thanks to Mr. Hoyg, who arranged the experience, Kyle Hamlin, who's a Tecumseh High School graduate and member of Team Red, White, and Blue. He was there, as well as some local veterans, who also spoke to the students and assisted with this project of cleaning headstones. Continuing on, I told you it was going to be a theme of Community Pride in Action. Continuing on, you might know this, because it was just last week, rake a difference. The service project occurred, again, in partnership with Tecumseh Quanis Club, where our middle schools put their rakes to good use for Rake a Difference Day, which has become a 25-year-plus beloved tradition in and around Tecumseh. It's pretty darn cool. So, this event brought together our fourth through our eighth graders, who went out into the community and certainly did some yard work for residents. Carrying on a little bit more with that, this event is more than just a service project. It certainly is that, but the feel of the event is one more of a community-building event, where our kids go out, interact with residents, and certainly perform a service in raking leaves, but it's not just the project part of it, it's the community-building part of it that's really special in this event. And then finally, I want to make mention of some future composers that we possibly have in the making. We have some seventh graders, who each wrote an original theme and variations piece last year, and they earned 100% on this assignment. So, their work was then submitted to the Young Composers of Michigan by Mrs. McKincheck. So, recently, they received some feedback on their compositions, and they are now being considered for performance at the Michigan Music Conference in January. So, I will keep you posted, but that's just another great piece of news for our kids in our community. And I will stop there. Thank you, Mr. Lewis, and I'll turn it back to you.
Okay. This brings us to public comment. And according to the Open Meeting Act of 1986, the board provides opportunity for citizen input during the public comments section. Because agendas are full, each speaker is limited to three minutes. The board will listen, take comments and questions under advisement, and not respond at this time. The presiding officer will refer questions to Superintendent for Research and Response. Is there public comment tonight?
My name is Anthony Lannis. It's hard to square the accusations of inaccuracies when nearly half the words I wrote are quotes of what you said in the October 13 meeting. I did not speculate, opine, or even theorize. My only goal was to keep the parents and citizens of this school district informed of what happens during meetings, and encourage them to watch the video and come to their own conclusions. Now, the only rumors started came from your own words and a lack of transparency, something the district continues to struggle with. You complained we didn't provide any opportunity to clarify, but you should have done that in the meeting. You could have called WLN and the Herald yourselves to explain what happened long before anything was written, and what was there to clarify. At the time, your own words made it sound like you had no idea what was going on. If there was anything to clarify, the opportunity was then, and you missed it. And it's not the media's job to play public relations for the government. I remember when Tecumseh had a proactive superintendent instead of a reactive one. Instead, you had a member somewhat, but not really, kind of, sort of summarize what did or didn't happen in closed session while getting key facts completely wrong, who then had to be corrected, leaving more questions than answers as to what had truly happened behind closed doors. There are still many unanswered questions about what has happened that I hope we get answers to tonight, or maybe another FAQ, or maybe you'll let Ms. McGee actually speak. She seems to be the only board member that attempts to provide clarity to the public, and you shut her down. It's not only suspicious, but it's also rude, patronizing, and disgusting. To see how she's being publicly treated by this board when she's the only one actually trying to prevent this board from poking their own eyes out with safety scissors. It should not take two bloggers, two parents, to get professionals to do their job. And if you want to count us as journalists, then we will have to start sitting at the press table. Thank you.
I do have a follow-up question. I guess a clarifying question. I have a clarifying question, just to make sure I heard you right. Did you say information from the closed session? Did you say the information from our closed session?
That is what I said, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Looking for revisions, approval of the agenda. Do we have any revisions or approvals? Any revisions?
Not that I'm aware of.
None, okay. Approval of the agenda.
I move to approve the agenda as presented for tonight's meeting on November 10, 2025.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the agenda as written for today's meeting. Roll call vote. Trustee Davis?
Aye.
Trustee Martinez?
Aye.
Trustee Brooks?
Aye.
Trustee McGee?
Aye.
Trustee Simpson?
Aye.
Trustee Miller?
Aye.
And the chair votes aye. And the scheduled reports. Dr. Martinez, you're up.
All right. So, Curriculum Committee met last Wednesday the 5th. We had only the new course adoption for the AP Research course on the agenda, and I think, you know, we have the packet here. So, you know, the, we offer AP Seminar, and jump in if I screw this up, because you obviously know it better than I, Megan. We offer AP Seminar already. Offering the AP Research class, in addition to the writing skills and components of the class, would offer for our students the chance to earn the AP Capstone Diploma as well. So, the requirements are on, that's the third page of the packet there. Students who earn a score of three or higher in Seminar and AP Research, and four additional exams, get the AP Capstone Diploma. And students with a score of three or higher in AP and Research, or Seminar and Research, but not the four additional, will get the AP Seminar and Research Certificate. You know, overall, the committee, we thought the course sounded real positive. We were supportive of it, and, you know, recommend moving forward with it.
Can I add?
Please, jump in.
Okay. I was just going to say, the teacher that has presented to us indicated that there were about 20, was it 20, right? Where is Megan? Oh, there she is. Was it 20? Oh, Rebecca's here. Well,
Yeah, they're right there with all the knowledge.
Rebecca can tell us way better than we can. We defer to them.
Please, maybe we do.
I'm so sorry. I didn't see over there.
Yeah, let's just move to discussion item, because we have the two people right here.
Perfect.
That works.
Ms. Rebecca Keebler, she is one of our lovely ELA teachers at the high school, and she and Mr. Wellman brought this to us, and as you know, per board policy, if we're going to adopt a new course, we need to bring it to you guys first. She can do a much better job answering questions than I can, but yes, what you said, Dr. Martinez, was correct. There's a couple different options. It's a pretty prestigious diploma if they can get this Capstone. There's not really many schools in our area. Mylan has it. Clinton says that they have it, but we're not quite sure. Rebecca did some digging and couldn't really find it in their course catalog. So, it's only one of 20 schools in Michigan, I believe, that offer this specific diploma. Yes. So, she can answer any more questions that you guys have about it, or tell you a little bit more, but it's a pretty unique opportunity we'd be able to give our students.
Yeah, so just talking a little bit more about AP Research. So, we already do offer Seminar. I am certified to teach AP Research, so it's no additional cost to send me for the training. I'm already trained in it. And then with AP Research, so essentially, students are through AP College Board, they are picking some sort of a topic that they want to research, so essentially, they are looking into research, finding a gap in the research, and attempting to fill that gap in the research. So, the reason why AP Seminar and AP Research were introduced was this was at the request of higher education, and different universities saying that students were lacking that skill when they got to college. So, being able to research and have those skills prior to entering into college, so that was why College Board introduced Seminar and Research. So, since we already offer plenty of APs, we already offer Seminar, this is the last course that we would need to offer in order to offer the AP Capstone Diploma, and then also the AP Seminar and AP Research Certificate.
Wonderful.
How do colleges handle that certification diploma?
So, I have it here. There's quite a few that will accept the credits for it.
Is it just accepting the credit for the elective, or does it give them some other kind of boost?
So, from what I understand, is it's just, it's something that will stand out to colleges, because it is a pretty competitive program to get in a diploma, because, I mean, not only do they have to get a three in both Seminar and in Research, but they're getting a three in four other AP courses. So, that alone tells colleges, these students are dedicated, they work hard, they're in all of these different APs, and they're able to get that certificate. So, it's just one of those things that I, from my understanding, just stands out on those resumes. Less, or it was about 0.1% of students graduated last year with the AP Capstone Diploma.
And is that relevant mostly to Michigan, or is it outside of Michigan as well?
All of the United States.
Okay.
Any other questions?
I asked Mr. Hilton how many people we had, just as far as number of students, and he mentioned that we currently have 61 in Seminar.
Yes, we have 61 in Seminar.
Have any students requested this, and if so, how many do you think would be participating in this additional class?
So, Mr. Wellman was talking with his students, gauging their interest. It is pretty early in the year, but he said that there were more than 20 that were already saying that they definitely wanted to take it. But a lot of them wanted to see how the rest of the research went throughout the rest of the year before they completely committed, but there was definitely a lot of interest. And then at least 20 said that they definitely wanted to take it.
And the chances if they, you know, do take these two courses, the pass rates for both of these courses are very high. I think it was like 87% or something. So, if we were able to offer this, then more than likely, they'd be getting that extra certification diploma, which would be great for them.
Are we getting any further along on the analysis between AP and college credit classes?
Yes, we're getting a little bit along. We've had Ms. Irish and the committee met to, like I mentioned last time, look at the scores versus juniors and the differences, and if they're dual enrollment versus AP here, and seeing if that makes an impact on the SAT. So, that's early work, but yes, they are meeting. We're starting to discuss them and look into it.
One question. Is there any possibility to get grants or anything to help support it out there, or is this just something the school would take on?
Yeah, there's really no funding cost for us. You know, Rebecca's already certified to teach the course. It's just a shuffling of the schedule. We don't have to add any FTE. We don't have to, like, for right now, typically, teachers will have a caseload and an elective, let's say. So, we would just shuffle this, and we're going to offer it as an elective, although we want someone in our ELA department to teach it, just because in order to get a credit in ELA, we have to feel really confident that we're covering all of those ELA standards. But this isn't just focused on ELA. It's research all around. So, it's really applicable to any subject area, but it makes the most sense to kind of let that live in the ELA department. But it's really just a matter of working the schedule, so they can fit that elective in and maybe not take a different elective, for example.
I don't necessarily have a comment, but I think, or a question, but maybe a comment, and maybe it'll spur some additional discussion. There's lots of ways for our students to get college credit. They can do dual enrollment, they can do AP courses. Now, there's the early college offering from LISD. I think what's interesting about all these offerings is that if you, if you study the pathway of each student through these, it's important really to kind of support all three, and here's why I'm saying this. I think our students or learners that are looking at AP, they are in a group of students who definitely know where they want to go, probably have in mind already in their pathway advanced degrees all the way up to PhD, and probably have some pretty big colleges on their list, honestly. And then I think the importance of early college and dual enrollment give our students and learners who also kind of know where they want to go, but maybe they're thinking about the next enrollment size of universities down. I don't want to say quality-wise down, because they're not at all, but they're kind of maybe a more practical approach, or have viewpoints of maybe some more practical majors or careers that they want to go into. So, I think it's important to consider, and I also think early college and dual enrollment give some of our students who maybe a traditional high school experience isn't really what they want. They want to get in, they want to get done, and they want to move on, in a lot of cases, because they're motivated to do that. It gives them some opportunity. So, I think from my perspective, supporting both, kind of, all three of the main pathways that we could have here is really important, because we have many different types of students. And I think that's what makes Tecumseh Public Schools so strong, is that, and Tecumseh as a community so strong, we feed into the community, students of all different types of backgrounds. Students that want to go into the trades and do CTE, and follow through the LISD tech and some of our courses. Students that want to do apprenticeship programs, or things like Advanced Manufacturing Technician courses at Washtenaw Community College. Students that know their pathway, maybe not so concerned about the labels or the letters after their names. I applaud them for that. I was one of them. And then, you know, kids who really are like, I want to be a physicist, or I want to be a doctor, or I want to be something. And so, we have those students, I've talked to them personally, who want to do AP, because they know exactly where they want to go, and they know exactly what that pathway is. And so, I, all of them are equally important in my book, and I really appreciate you bringing this opportunity of a Capstone Diploma, so.
I would, I would say to, because I was thinking much about the same thing, about, you know, the dual enrollment versus AP, and how, you know, we think about numbers, but, each of these kind of directions, once you get out of those, you know, core graduation requirements, whether it's the CTE stuff, or it's, you know, AP or dual enrollment or anything else, they're not classes intended for every student to take. And, you know, the question, you know, the, sort of, the demand on us is to give our students the best opportunities that we can. And this seems like a chance with, you know, particularly from a cost-neutral point of view, to give one section of our students something that may be useful. And, you know, I would agree that I don't think that takes anything away from the value or, you know, the necessity to continue to develop dual enrollment programs, or programs that help students who are going in other directions. And I think the observation that these probably aren't the same group of students is probably right, you know, that for some students, that primary driver, when they're looking at a college degree, is going to be cost, and, you know, time to get out to the workforce. And so, dual enrollment, and, you know, a, you know, a local college where they can finish and get their degree and work is their priority. For others, they are looking at, they want that four-year university experience, they want to leave home, live in a dorm. They're going to look at that different, and the course selections they make, and, you know, their path is going to be different. And, you know, this seems to me like a good class. I think the skill set of, you know, technical and scientific writing, getting an introduction to that, learning what it looks like, gives our students a chance to get into undergrad with an advantage. And the opportunity to give students the chance to get a certification and something to let them stand out during that application process, I think is good from both an individual student point of view and from a chance as a district to brag about what we offer.
Yeah, and the other thing I'll mention with that, too, is, you know, the administration didn't take this to the teachers. The teachers brought this to us. So, by them taking this on, it's not like a normal elective. They're going to have a lot of grading, a lot of reading, and a lot of work. So, if they want to take this on to give that opportunity to our students, I definitely think that we should value their input and let them take that on, because they're going to do a great job.
Absolutely.
I will say the culmination, too, of this program, it ends with the students have a large academic paper, and then they also have an oral defense of that paper, which is, again, really great experience for students that are planning to go to college, and even just in the workforce in general, to be able to articulate their ideas, back it up with research, and then be able to defend that in front of a panel.
That's what's really exciting to sit here and listen to this, is that we have teachers coming to us with ideas to make Tecumseh better.
Absolutely.
And that's what's going to separate us apart. So, just, I'm really excited just to hear somebody from the ground, I hate to say it, but a teacher bringing up an idea to the administration, and not the administration forcing something down on them. So,
Absolutely.
that's what's going to separate, as trustee Davis said, is going to separate us apart. So, thank you.
And even at the, you know, the committee level, when they come in and present this to us, yeah, it's easy to get excited about it, because they're excited about it. And it, this is really cool. What a great thing to offer our students. And so, yeah, it is hard to then say anything other than, yeah, we think we should do it. Look what they're saying. This is great. And that's certainly how I felt coming out of the committee meeting Wednesday, that I think this is an exciting class. I think it's a, both topically, but also because it positions us to offer something really cool to the students for whom it's appropriate.
We both said we wish we would have had this class.
Yeah. This is a great class.
Yeah, for sure.
I would spend way less time in the writing center.
Do we, do we?
Any other questions for Rebecca?
Not, I guess it's kind of a question, but do we promote how these programs can be beneficial for students outside of ones that are going to go to premium universities? I mean, still, AP courses are very important for someone that's going to go into Technical Engineering, Electrical, any of that stuff. Do we do, do we feel we do a good enough job of promoting that and say, hey, this isn't just for the kids that are going to college, this is also important for people that are going to go out into skilled trades, because I think that's also very important.
Yeah, I think that's something that we could definitely brainstorm and think about, how we could have a conversation with our counselors as they're helping kids schedule, and have it maybe be seen through a different lens. That's a great idea, and I think that, I'm not sure how much they promote it, but.
So, last year, specifically with AP Seminar being a new course added, and then also just Wellman and I in general, so Wellman also teaches Lang, and I teach Lit, and he's teaching Seminar, and I'll teach Research. Last year, we did our, like, Tour Day AP is what we called it. So, we went and talked to all of the English classes and let kids know, like, these are what these classes are. This is what you can expect from them, and that was one of the things that we touched on. So, he would be able to talk more about how exactly he spoke with the students about it, but that is something that we do as we go around, and we talk to the different English classes and let them know. And even though it's not just specifically for English, that's where we know we can hit the most amount of kids, since everybody has to take an English credit every single year. So, we do go around and we talk to them about what they can expect from these courses and what they can expect to gain from them.
With the college credit associated with this class, do you think that's going to be accepted at most universities?
From what I could see, it was accepted from, I have a number in here somewhere. I went and looked on it. I think it was like over 60 Ohio schools accepted the credit, and then, I'm trying to remember the number from Michigan.
23 Michigan colleges and 66 Ohio colleges.
Yes, so 23 Michigan colleges, and then, yes, so, or 60, and that was for Research. I know Seminar, I believe there was more for Seminar, because I think Research is a more recent course that's been added.
All right, well, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thanks, ladies.
Mrs. Wade, did we just knock out?
You did.
Okay, so we don't have to do AP Research Course Adoption. All right.
That's why we said.
We just kind of slid into it, yeah.
We actually kind of went into two of them there, but MASP Strategic Planning Proposal, Mr. Hilton.
Thanks, Mr. Lewis. Trustees, this is something that we began discussing back at the beginning of the year, and as you know, the Michigan Association of School Boards is offering us a comprehensive strategic planning service designed to address one of today's biggest challenges, and that is doing more with less. So, the MASP process, trustees, is really built around answering three fundamental questions. Where is our district now? Where is our district going? And how will we get there? What makes their approach special is that it's completely customized to us here in Tecumseh. Every stakeholder will have a voice in shaping our future, and that will occur through a series, or combination, if you will, of face-to-face focus groups, virtual meetings, electronic surveys. It will gather feedback from staff, community members, students, and parents about our district's strengths, improvement opportunities, implementation barriers, and future vision. This process includes, then, a comprehensive set of deliverables. The board, or there will be facilitated board and administrator conversations, facilitated focus groups, an educational data report with five-year trend analysis, and a full-day strategic planning retreat. At that eight-hour retreat, our planning time, which will include board members, administrators, teachers, staff, students, and community members, we will review the data and will develop, uh, and community me- community members, we will review the data and will develop or renew our mission and, and beliefs and identify our strategic uh, goals and priorities. So, this entire process takes about three to four months to complete. Starting now, or at least soon after the new year, um, the, with anyway, starting now gives us the, the maximum opportunity to engage our stakeholders, align our budget cycles, and ensure we can implement the plan as we launch the twenty-six, twenty-seven school year. That is a, a summary of all of the information that is in your, your packet regarding the uh, M A S B strategic planning process and proposal for us. I will pause here and uh, take any of your questions or turn it back over to the board for further discussion.
Do we have any other discussion or questions for Mr. Hilton while he's here?
Maybe just a quick question, this might not be for Mr. Hilton, but for the other board members. Do you remember how much we paid the last time we did this?
I wanna say it was a little over eight thousand last time. I don't remember the exact number, but I, I feel that.
Was that through M A S B also?
Correct, yep, we had, um, as, you were there, so, um, as Mr. Hilton had said, M A S B comes down and they facilitate all of those meetings with stakeholders, teachers, staff, I, I mean, just everybody, they do all of that, the surveys. And then, they bring that information to us. And then, there's another comprehensive meeting that, it was an all-day meeting. I don't remember exactly how many hours, but we were there all day.
Yeah, I think it, I think we got there like at eight or nine and couldn't get out of there till four.
Yeah, I feel like it was at least an eight-hour thing. And it was about forty people that were different community members, teachers, students, and us. And, and, and parent, yeah, just a lot of different stakeholders. And we went through this entire process, and it was, you know, they break us up into small groups, bring us together in larger groups. It was an amazing process, and it really took everybody's ideas and started boiling down into what you saw on those boards once we were done. And it kind of, once we were done with that session, is then they went back, processed that raw data, and then brought us back the final product.
Okay.
It was, I, I know it seems like a lot of money, but at the same time, they're doing a lot of work behind the scenes.
Well, I um, you know, I was thinking about this, that, you know, when you're on the outside kinda looking in, I think things like this can kinda seem like fluff a little bit. But, as I've sat on the board over the last couple of years, it stood out to me how much that plan is used as guidance and accountability, right? I mean, it, it isn't just words, there is direction and it's, it's used to make decisions. And um, you know, I think doing this well and, and doing it right is, is money well spent.
Well, it's, eh, when you're really taking so many different perspectives of the community and boiling that down to the direction of the school, you just, you can't, you can't put a price on that.
Yeah.
There is a price on it, and I think we need to consider that. Um, that's probably my biggest concern with this. Uh, I think the outputs of the result of that process were extraordinary. I'm amazed every year with the level of detail that comes out of that as part of the, the planning process. So, um, I was impressed with the results. I think having um, an independent party involved in that eh, um, from executing the work as well as just being a independent facilitator has benefits to it. Um, I'm just concerned about the ten thousand dollars. Um, four, four of the board members here have, I believe, have already been through this process once. Um, and at least two of us outside of that kinda do strategic planning for our jobs. Um, so, just in the interest of our financial position, um, I would, I'm considering that of, of being a question for me.
Yeah, I, I understand what you're saying, um, and I appreciate it. I think though, one of the problems with the board being the facilitator is that um, because we have governance over the district, sometimes bias can come into the play. And my concern is that I would be concerned if we would get, theoretically, the community can come to their school board, give their input, the school board takes it um, without bias. But I think um, one of the benefits of a na- unbiased facilitator or non-biased facilitator is that we also can sit as stakeholders or inputs into it, but then also it gives us, because we don't have the responsibility, I do strategic planning as well, I, I facilitate this stuff a lot. But I think um, when we have to facilitate it, we can't sit and listen. And so, for me, if, if someone else on the board wants to facilitate, to save the money, that's fine. But I, I prefer to sit with the stakeholders as a member of their community. And I prefer to put all of my energy into listening. So, um, I, I understand both sides. I think it's an important question, Mr. Hil- uh, Mr. Hilton, to discuss, you know, where does this come from in the budget? Um, you know, where are we at? Maybe it's a discussion for the first revision, which is probably in January.
Yep.
Um, to make sure, to trustee McGee's point, that, that we can um, do it without some impact to another program. But, but, you know, I guess the, the flip side of that is, while many of us do it professionally, our role in it is, one, as an input, and two, as a listener. And a facilitator's job is to facilitate, and not to kinda take it in and, and um, have it change their viewpoints. So, maybe that's, that's just my own opinion about it. But I think it's important, to trustee McGee's point, to try to understand in the first budget amendment kind of where would this come from, because, you know, we do have some making up to do.
Well, it's, it's ten thousand dollars, but over four years, it really boils down to twenty-five hundred dollars per year is what it, how, how it breaks out. I mean, and like, you know, we went through it the first time, I was a little, Jake said, a little skeptical, like, I, I've been on stuff like this before. But it, it went really well. I mean, uh, um, Debbie Stare, I can't remember who the other lady, what her name was, but I mean, they had us just, you're with this group, you're with this group. I mean, they, they, you, you were pretty much plucked out. And, you know, we talked about the stakeholders, we had students who were amazing parts of those groups. I mean, that was, to me, that was the, that was the difference.
Yep.
Because it wasn't just the adults, I mean, they, the students were in there and, and they impressed me a lot. And we got really good feedback from them. I mean, I, I, I couldn't lead it, I know that, um, and do a good job of it. But I, I, it was a good, it was a good process to go through, and it, it does, you know, we follow that, that's our, that's our outline for what we do here, and we get, like Doc said, we, we get held accountable by it. You, you meet the goals or you don't?
I looked it up, it was eighty-five hundred last time.
Okay.
And um, and, you know, to me, I think it's very important to have someone independent do this, cause this is one of the, this is one of the top things that we're supposed to be doing, is creating a strategic plan, hire a superintendent, make policy as a board, and I just feel like, yeah, could we do it ourselves, probably? But it's not gonna be as good of a job, and it's not gonna be as independent as it should be, so. And, and like Lynn said, we're gonna have bias, and we can't have that when you're developing a strategic plan, so. Um, at, at least, that's my opinion, but.
Yeah, we, we didn't choose who participated, they chose, I mean, eh, we, we walked in knowing nothing. And even though we've been through the process, every time, the process is different. And that is, eh, eh, until you experience it, I guess, I, I can't explain it any better than that. It's, it is what Tim said, it is boiling down the essence of the community into what they want us to do.
It is a lot of money, but it's money well spent. Cause I, originally, I thought, the first time, I was like, oh boy, eighty-five hundred dollars, but then, I was pleasantly surprised, it's been that way.
If you divide that out, that isn't even the cost of one middle school coach per year.
Right.
And it's, it's pretty cheap.
Yep.
I think too, um, just another thing after attending the leadership conference for M A S B, there were two or three districts there who gave kinda seminars on how the M A S B worked with them in their strategic plan, and then out of that, maybe there were very specific things that then the M A S B really came in and supported them on, to make sure that they were successful in it. And so, um, it, for me, it kind of crystallized or um, defined even more kind of the value of M A S B. But um, again, I, you know, um, allocation is twenty-five hundred dollars a y- a year over the life of the strategic plan. But I would say, you know, we do have kind of a, a makeup kind of, you know, that we wanna try to do. And I think um, and I think with just how the funding came out from the state, some of it's a little, um, some of it has conditions attached to it, which might make it difficult to um, pull the lever on, so we have to be careful with the cash flow too. So, I, you know, um, but Mr. Hilton, I, I trust in your capability to kind of look into that and let us know what you think.
Sure, I will do that, yep.
But I, you know, I agree, in- independence is um, for me, the way I feel about independence is, is, one, it, it takes the bias away, and so, the community can feel that they were heard. But also for me, it just gives me the opportunity not to worry about the facilitation and to be able to listen and participate in a way.
Right.
Very often, I'm not allowed to in my professional life, so.
Well, maybe too, with this being a public meeting, then maybe there's somebody in the public that has really good experience with strategic planning and facilitating and would offer their service to the community. I don't know, but one, one positive thing is that we're talking about this. You know, you got a new superintendent, kind of a new board, um, changes across the board and the community and everything that it's important to probably rethink it and get everybody's input. I mean, that's important. And it's great to hear that, that fifty people come, I mean, that, that is, to me, is the most important, is getting their voice and hearing from them. Listening, I like Lynn's point about listening too, because I do feel that that is probably the most important of this process for us as trustees, is to really listen to what the public is thinking and hearing and wanting.
Anything else from anybody? Okay, Mr. Hilton, let's go to the Harriack Park proposal.
Okay, trustees, I will follow up on a few of those items with the M A S B strategic planning proposal. But moving on to the, to Harriack Park, trustees, we did have another proposal come in recently on the Harriack Park property. This information is, is in your packet, but just to give you a, a generalized description, the proposal is from the Family Counseling and Children's Services to purchase the Harriack Park building, uh, to re- to relocate the Catherine Cobb Domestic Violence Shelter. The organization plans to convert the majority of the building into residential living space for domestic violence survivors and their families, while also incorporating some office space for client meetings, staff training areas, and donation for storage facilities. The intended use really centers on providing a secure and um, stable housing environment for fam- families fleeing domestic violence in Lenoir County. The building would serve as both an emergency shelter and a comprehensive support center, offering confidential counseling services, crisis intervention, and connections to community resources. In terms of some of the, the details of the purchase agreement, the key items, the sale price offered is for a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars. There is a, a down payment or earnest money of five thousand dollars that will be held by the title company. The due diligence, proposed due diligence period is three hundred and sixty-five days from the effective date of the agreement. You know that during this period, the buyer would have the right to conduct environmental studies, soil analysis, uh, et cetera. And if the property is deemed unsuitable for their intended use, they can terminate the agreement and receive a full refund of their earnest money. The closing date, as it's currently written, is no later than December first, and the sale is uh, is on an as-is basis, with uh, this being a, a cash sale with no financing uh, contingencies. So, trustees, I did wanna bring this offer to your attention tonight. I do think it makes sense for us to consider it, but also uh, to, 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 certainly I'll follow your, your lead, but to, to ask for a, a non-refundable um, deposit or down payment on this um, property, as well as a, a much shorter due diligence window before committing to a purchase agreement. This is just simply up for discussion this evening, you're not voting, um, but I wanted to, just one, share the information with you, and two, seek your feedback, questions, um, certainly I will take your direction.
Just a, a point of clarification, the closing date is no sooner than twelve one twenty-six, correct?
Correct.
Okay.
Did I say that wrong?
No.
You just said December, so, just to confirm that.
Yep.
But I, you know, um, I think this is a wonderful organization. I think they do absolutely amazing things in Lenoir County. I, I think it's one of those things, it's one of those organizations and one of those things about Lenoir County that people don't think would be in Lenoir County, but it is. And um, uh, you know, one question I would wanna know is, uh, how does the city feel? Cause we have that discussion a lot, we're talking about, we've had a lot of discussion about selling property. But um, here's what I think this sale gives to those families and back to Tecumseh. So, um, to this organization and the families they serve, it gives children an opportunity to live in a neighborhood um, that is safe, that they can take walks around, that they can ride their bikes around. There's play space. It, it's just an amazing um, opportunity. They could have a big garden, they could learn about all of that kinda stuff. And then, they get to go to, to schools where we embrace all types of children, we're very inclusive. Um, I see that with my own children, so there's a comment about that comment, uh, that is from my own personal experience. And so, you know, I, I feel like Tecumseh has a lot to offer. But here's what those families offer back to Tecumseh. So, giving them a very strong, safe place to transition from one life to another. Um, builds a lot of loyalty to a community. And this organization helps those families um, build a foundation that they grow on. And so, um, those families then are, eh, stay in the community, they appreciate what the community has done for them, and they give back to their community. And those children remember um, how the community treated them. And so, from that perspective, then, they wanna come back and live here, they wanna raise their families here, they wanna break the cycle that they lived with. And so, you know, it, it's a generational payback on those families to the community as well. And so, um, you know, I'm curious about the city, what they say. I, I would support the city talking to the community about it, especially the community in the Harriack Park neighborhood. But um, I think this organization has a wonderful track record of, of kinda building that foundation and those families being successful. So, um, I'm curious to know how the due diligence stu- you know, works. And I, I think honestly, it's kind of a win-win situation.
So, I can just share a little bit of information in terms of uh, I, well, I don't have specific details for you cause I'm not necessarily a part of it. I know that there are discussions occurring with city officials, um, as well as Mr. Madison and I have both done some, some tours uh, that involved representatives from Catherine Cobb, as well as representatives from the city for a, a tour and an opportunity to ask and answer questions. Beyond that, I would have to seek a little more details for you, which I can certainly do.
So, I think that it's, everything you said, and absolutely, of course. Um, I, I do think that if we're gonna keep it off the market for a year, that the non-refundable EMD is certainly well within a reasonable expectation. And I, I think that probably this comes from, you know, our situation with Patterson, which is a little different, where we're closing on it, having the year's due diligence, and then, at the end of that, it's just done. But we've already closed, we've already got that money. So, this is just a, a little different, and I, I think that there could probably be some negotiations that would um, So this is just a, a little different, and I, I think that there can probably be some negotiations that would, um, make it so it's equitable for all parties. I, I, I would like this to be something that we certainly put every effort into making happen.
What type of negotiations do you refer to?
The, the year due diligence period. I mean, like I said, it's kind of the opposite. So Patterson, we're closing on Patterson, and then he'd asked for that year's due diligence.
Right, right.
And then there was supposed to be some other things that happened that aren't going to happen, but that's okay. We're, we know where we stand and we're gonna be, we have the money. We're, we're holding on to it for a year to let him do a few things, but at the end of that year, it's his. This is kind of just the opposite. They're asking us to wait a year while they do the due diligence, and then they'll close, but anytime they could walk away. And so I think there could be some negotiations there to just maybe shorten that timeframe up a little bit.
Yeah, that, that's my concern. It seems like a long time that it's off the market where somebody comes along and they, they spy it, and they want it. They're probably not gonna wait six or eight months. And, and again, we know the zoning issue is not, it's out of our hands. I mean, we can work with the district, or the, the, the city, but they have, they've got last bats.
We, we can probably ask if they've talked to them, cause they're here. Has, has there been any communication with the city?
There has been. And so I think that's our biggest holdup, is getting, it's really the red tape of going through the city. Of course, they're gonna have to do a lot of inspections, because we're gonna have to pass, you know? But I think the biggest thing is, it's the city that's telling us, in order to get it rezoned, it could take at least a year to do that.
Gotcha, okay, that makes sense.
So, I really, I think we can sell it to the community, I think we can sell it to Harrick Park, but it's a matter of getting it through the city to get it rezoned and going through those steps. It's, if they, they, they just laid it out that it, it could easily take a year.
That's fair.
They're, they're really determined to do this to get everything housed under one roof, and that's really what they wanna do. Get the offices one place, the, um, the home one place. And if they can get everything counseling, the shelter, and their offices, that's what their goal is. And we've looked for a long time for something that, that they can see.
Thank you, Jen, sorry, not, not towards you on the spot.
No, I just appreciate that, that's why I'm here.
So, so that information sheds a little more light on, on that year time period. And to be perfectly honest, in light of everything that we know about the foundation, everything, um, that it's Harrick Park and the Har- uh, i- it's full circle for me, I, I'm happy to wait for them to get that approval. So, and then maybe that's the contingency, is once city approval's done, something like that, but, um.
Yeah, so the city said it could take a year.
Right.
If it takes six months, you know, maybe there's a clause about within thirty days of city approval or something.
We closed.
Yeah.
Yep.
It'll probably take them ten months, cause they gotta change their master plan.
Yeah.
Right.
Yeah. And they just went through that strategic committee right to do that.
Exactly.
Six months seems a little ambitious, but.
Right. But if, uh, this, this is who I personally would like to see there, if we can make that happen.
Uh, Josh, just to remem- um, maybe Mister Hilton, maybe you know, um, the appraisal came in at what level?
No, three s- three forty.
It was three.
Three forty?
But.
But there was a caveat to that, wasn't there?
You basically have to tear it down. The land is worth it.
R- right, while it appraised that high, they, there was something, and I don't remember where we saw it, but they basically said that, that doesn't necessarily mean that's what you're going to get for it.
We're gonna sell it for it, a hundred percent, right.
Right. So.
Yeah, I'm, I'm sure to make it a residential facility, the expectations of code and.
Exactly.
Cleanup are probably pretty significant, and so I'm sure that's factored in too.
Yeah, it is.
Significant. Yeah.
Yeah, probably gonna be an investment in, uh, doing some work there.
Anyways.
Anything else regarding the Harrick Park proposal? Okay, on the fund balance, Mister Hilton.
Okay, uh, trustees, next up tonight, uh, is an opportunity for us to just really begin a, a preliminary conversation about our, our fund balance and our strategic reserves. Uh, as you know, the, the board, you've, you have set a, you've set a fund balance goal within our overall budget. Uh, and that goal is based really upon what we believe is, is prudent and appropriate for our district. So just to say it aloud for us at the table and, and our community, having a healthy reserve is a critical component of our fiscal responsibility. It provides us with flexibility to weather unexpected, uh, challenges, manage cash flow effectively, especially in those fall months when we go without a state aid payment. And it positions the district to respond proactively, uh, when we need to. So to that end, Mister Lennar is, and you know this, is now working on our most current allocations from the, the state and updating our revenue projections and our expenditure forecasts. From there, we will bring forward to you a first, um, budget amendment to the board most likely in January. In preparation for n- uh, that amendment, but not just that amendment, really for the twenty six, twenty seven school years as well, I thought that now would be an appropriate time for us to just to begin a discussion a- around the board's fiscal goals related to the fund balance. So, the board currently does have a twelve percent fund balance goal. I'd like to open the floor for your thoughts and your discussion, uh, around that goal and, um, your priorities and the financial position you's, you, you believe is appropriate for the district moving forward.
Well, we initially had a fifteen percent fund equity, and it was, we were asked to drop it to twelve. Um, I don't know if that was my first year on the board or the second, but we yielded to that, and it's tumbled below that. And it's, it's at a point where it just needs to be built up, cause we're, every, every year we're borrowing money to make payrolls. We're paying interest and, or at least the last couple of years, there's.
But hang on, has it tumbled below twelve?
Cause I don't believe it has.
Well.
What's that again?
I don't believe it has tumbled below twelve, because we added two hundred thousand to it. We were at twelve last year, how did, how did we fall below twelve now?
So I.
Because I don't think we're using the right formula of what we have been using. So we need to figure out what formula we're going to use first, and then come up with the number that we want.
Glad you, glad you mentioned that, cause if it didn't come up, I was gonna mention it, you are correct.
Okay, sorry.
So we do have to decide how we are going to, uh, define what we mean when we say fund balance. And is that a percentage of unrestricted revenues, which I believe is the way that it has been defined, which pushes us up towards twelve. I believe we're just a little bit shy of that though. Or are we going to measure it as a, a, a percentage of, or our unassigned fund balance as a percentage of total expenditures?
Like fund equity divided by expenditures?
More or less.
Okay, all right.
Yep.
I don't, I don't know what.
So when, when, when Maynor was here, they were, they were measuring it the, the, the latter way that I described.
Yep.
Yeah, that kinda caught us off guard a little bit.
Yeah, yeah.
So.
Now how does the state, as far as financial risk, how, what, what formula do they use?
Right.
Yeah, so I have to get a firm answer to that question. I, I, I know when we submitted the FID report, part of the, the information that we got back was, uh, fund balance as defined as a percentage of unrestricted revenue.
Right.
Okay.
Which is very different than what our auditors shared.
Right.
Right.
So that is the way we have been doing it, yes.
That's the way we've been doing it, but that's not per our policy. Per thirty two oh two, it's a percentage of estimated expenditures.
Say it again.
So I believe that the, the previous director was calculating it based on a subset of revenues. Um, but according to thirty two oh two, our policy, it says an annual unassigned general fund balance of at least twelve percent of estimated expenditures. So the policy matches kind of what the auditors were saying, but that's not how we were calculating it. And in the perfect world, the, the revenues are the same as the expenses, so it's not a big deal, but it's a little bit off balance now.
So I, I, I think we should set a level for both. Um, because theoretically, we would be a zero-sum game, but on any given year, you're not going to be. And so, just from a history perspective, we dropped from the unrestricted revenue calculation from fifteen to twelve, because we had maintenance that we needed to do.
Right.
Um, things were getting tough in a few of the buildings, and so we made a, a decision, um, to, to utilize three percent by unrestricted revenue to there. So, and I appreciate Trustee McGee confirming the policy. For me, I, you know, baseline is we have to be able to cover that month of time where we have no revenue. For me, I'd like it to be two months, cause what happened this year.
Right.
We need to be prepared for that. We probably have another couple of cycles before the pendulum swings to where we're working with each other again in Lansing. So, um, so that, even though we say we're working together. And so, um, you know, one or two months, I think that's something we need to discuss, and I think that's minimum. So I almost feel like, um, one number isn't the way that we want, and I'm curious to hear everybody else's opinion, but my feeling is like, here's the minimum. And then there's also a maximum, where we say, we're, when we get to this level and we maintain this level, we're gonna reinvest any money above it back into the schools ASAP. So, um, Mister Lennar shared with us some information about other districts and averages and those types of things. And, and while I hope that upper limit, we are conservative in determining that, I, I think you can get into a conservative viewpoint of finances too, where then we're harming, we're not adding things to the district, we're not providing value to the district, because we're just saving whatever money we don't spend.
Right.
And so for me, I would like to see kind of a, a concept of a minimum and a maximum. Um, and then, you know, as part of that, it's, it's, you set those numbers, but then as we talk, as we get budget reports and we get expenditure reports and those types of things, again, what are we able to see or understand? I, I don't want to get into every check, don't want to get into every expenditure every month. But what are those things that tell us, we're gonna, where are we gonna be in that range on any, on that school year, right? Maybe two school years, maybe three? And then, how do I know that we're in danger as a board member? So we, we've kinda talked about the CENS check, right?
Right.
So, so how do you help, how do we as the governance team for the district, how can we, quickly is not the right word, but, um, simply, clearly see, should I be asking more questions? That's, that's kind of, kind of where I'm at. But I, I feel like a range, and I, I would like to see it as both, because the state judges us, and we have to fill out more paperwork if the unrestricted revenue calculation goes below, I think, five percent.
Yeah.
Yep.
So we have to see that, because there's a request to us if we don't stay above five percent. I, that's not my minimum, by the way. Um, but I think the total expenditures is a more practical viewpoint that the board can easily understand, how are we doing versus covering all of our expenditures? And then I think too, as we start to have, I think all of this has allowed all of us to become more educated on how school finances work. Um, I know at the leadership conference, I asked very different questions than I, I have in the past because of all of this, and I'm, I'm really thankful for that. It's made me a better board member. But, so, you know, how do I know? I wanna see total expenditures, because I can say, okay, maybe the total of a year and then the total of a month, or that September and October month, something like that, that helps me say, hey, we're on track. But also like, hmm, uh, to cover September is X percent, and like, September and October is Y percent, and then maybe we're a little higher than that. And if I'm not falling in that range, then I know I'm falling below the line and it's unacceptable. So, that, that's just kind of my viewpoint of, I, it's way more sophisticated than we've had in the past, and I understand that. And it may be something new or a new concept, uh, for a director of finance who's worked with schools before. I, I totally understand that, so I'm good with a glide slope too, up to that kinda standard. But, um, that's kind of what I feel like. I wanna see both calculations. I'd like us to agree on a range, a minimum and a maximum. That, that's just kind of what I'm thinking now, as I kind of practice it.
One, one thing, I agree, the, the whole, but it's taken me ten months to understand it. I'm still not there. But through some research, the MSBO, which is the Michigan School Business Officials, they recommend that you, any school should have a fund balance to cover the, um, months, the two-month period between August and October, when state aid is not available. So then you took, you look at your expenses and you say, okay, what's your two months' expenses for those months? And that's what your fund balance should be. Um, I also did a little, I did a little research after talking to M A, M A S B, just so I could learn a little bit myself and educate myself. And what they recommend is, look at your demographic, look at your county, look at your demographic, find out, use that to kind of benchmark where you're at. And if you look at our fund balance compared to the fund balance of the schools in our county, we're the fourth worst, but we have the second highest enrollment. So it really, um, is something that we have to look at, I think. And I think it's a good discussion for us to have, because, one, we, the last three years, our expenses have been better, larger than our revenue, right? Up until twenty four. Um, so we haven't been able to, the good news is, we did add money to it this year, which is a great thing. But if you look at the absolute dollars that we have in our fund balance, compared to the schools in our county, it's, it's pretty bad. And I don't know why, I have no idea, and it's not, and I really don't know, and I don't know if any of us do in here. But there's probably a lot of things that go into that. But it's just strange that we would be the only school in the county with over a thousand kids enrolled to have a fund balance of less than three million dollars, when our expenses are much more than that on a monthly basis.
Well, and that, and that's because we also get the lowest amount of funding per student, uh, pretty much all the schools in the county.
Okay, yeah, that's why I said.
And, and look at who's had sinking funds and bonds passed.
Yeah, and that, that's why I said there may be some really good data, but.
There is.
There is.
If you go look at the funding per student, uh, the, uh, I think it's Mun- Mun- Munichs or something.
Mu- Munix.
Um, you'll see how, I think Adrian's getting five thousand dollars more a student than we get.
It's the industry there.
Yep, cause they got, yeah, a lot more, um, non-homestead homes. They also get a, um, a lot more federal funding than we get. So there's a big disparity between funding in schools when it comes to per student.
Right.
So, and we're really, we're.
Trustee Simpson, if you could talk in here.
Oh, sorry, we are, we are really, uh, at the bottom of the totem pole when it comes to funding per student. And, but we also offer the best services in the county compared to any school.
Some, and that's important, right? We gotta know the data.
Exactly.
Yeah.
But then also figure out, are we comfortable, is twelve, fifteen percent gonna cover that two-month gap? And it puts us at risk if we think that it is, it's really not, so.
Yeah, it's not sufficient. The, the hard part is getting yourself, you know, everybody's done this, when you, you got married at twenty like I did, and you start out and you're broke, you try and figure out how you're gonna get yourself out of there. And it's, it's slow when you first start out, and when, if we just talk about fund equity percentages, you, it's, to assign a value to that is, is, is a good thing, but how you gonna feed that, that value? Because every time you, you have that fund equity versus, or the, versus expenditure, how much you put in, you know, you put in three hundred thousand, but then your, your expenditures go up a couple million that same year, you can say, wow, we put that much more money in. But by percentage, it could, it could actually go backwards, because of the, um, expenditures that we have. And at the same time, could, could we really drop, bow our heads into this and try and knock this out in two or three years? I don't think it's realistic, just because we don't wanna cut programming. Like you said, we've, we've, we've got more programs out there for kids than anybody else in the county. We wanna keep that. Um.
So that, and that's our job.
Well, we are here, we're here, we're here for the kids. We just wanna get our operations where we don't have to borrow money for basic ops, and, and we can, we can do that.
Yep. Yep.
We, we've done that for the most part, and, and again, I mean, we're, we should see a little more revenue, because by twenty twenty nine, the bond is gone. You know, I mean, so, well, I guess that, no, the, 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 the bond will be also, so, I mean, we don't, we won't be paying money on the bond anymore.
Is it even fun? Oh, our bond is gone.
Bond debt.
It's, it's really, I had the amortization on that in here, and I could scan that, email it to everybody, it was from PFM a, a couple of years ago. But, um, so that helps us a little. But um so that helps us a little bit, but it's 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 so small, once you get paid, you know, get it paid down this much, it's not a huge amount. But we have to build that back up. Cause we, you know, we know the state recommends fifteen percent fund equity. At ten percent, they start eyeballing you a little bit, at five percent, they can, you know, they can effectively have a emergency um um emergency financial manager. And and uh I don't know that they're, I haven't done that in quite a while, the last few years anyway. But that was a thing, certainly in the early twenty-tens and coming out of the, you know, the the banking crisis. And and we we just don't wanna be in that position. But I think we're gonna have to walk our way out of it, not run our way out of it because we don't wanna cut programs and and things that we do for students now. And we have, you know, the motivation you see from the teachers we have here, well, I mean, if you want the best, you you're gonna have to, you know, pay to play. And we gotta make sure we we save money for for salaries. One of the things we did was probably, you know, we we came in here four years ago. I backhanded it, but four years ago, and we gave everybody a pretty steep pay raise and we included lane changes and steps. So that ate up, but we felt that's what we had to do because there hadn't been a lot of pay raises and to come see and attend the time up before that. So we put the money where it went to our employees, the people like we heard tonight, uh Ms. Keebler, you know, people who make a difference. And that's the hard part, you know, we can't raise prices on anything. If we're we're not a corporation, we can't make mistakes and write off, oh, that's okay, we'll just write, you know, write it off as a tax loss. And you know, we have to, it's it a zero sum budget all the time and we have to try and predict how many kids we're gonna get, it's complex. I'm I'm pretty optimistic that with with Mr. Lennar here and then hopefully we get somebody on board that he can train, that they'll lay out a course of action for us and maybe we have three options that we look at. And and then we vote as a board, we put our heads together, collaborate, maybe we even have a special workshop for that. I don't care, but get it right and and I'm very confident with what if his his history, his background, he'll get us there. I mean, but we're gonna have to buck up and 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 make tough decisions. You're when you're when you're pinching pennies and trying to get, somebody's not getting what they want financially. So that's gonna take some, you know, build that fund equity up, we're gonna have to surgically do without in some areas. You can't just cut, in my opinion, we don't wanna cut programs, we don't wanna go back to pay to play sports. We don't wanna have programs like that that flush kids out. Cause we only hit the county, school in the county is doing it like we were. That's one, you lose people for that, there there's a lot of things. But if you want a first class um district that runs a lot of programs and a lot of options for kids, we've done that. Now we gotta figure out, sharpen the pencil a little bit. Mr. Hilton's, I'm sure, as as and as excited as anybody, I think he may be getting somebody here in the near future to come in and help with that. Um we don't know what that what that is, hopefully by Christmas or New Year's. That's when we can really get this going in earnest, cause right now, honestly, as good as Steve Lennar is, two days a week isn't gonna, isn't really gonna get us from where we just were to where we wanna be at.
So I think you you hit on two points that I think we need to consider. I think we've already made some tough decisions. But it took us a long time to close, to agree to close two buildings, that's been a long term discussion. Um Mr. Hilton in those staffing areas where he can make a proactive decision um has has been more judicious and careful in those analyses than maybe we've seen in the past. And so I think we've seen some benefits of that. Um but I think what we saw from this latest audit and some of the details you can see in the audit report, um we still have those areas where uh as a district, we're maybe making decisions without looking at the impact first, at all the impacts first. And so um and I I think the conversations I've had and things he's shared to all of us, I think Mr. Hilton is working on. Um how does he look at student services? How do you look at, how do you make sure that you're at least visualizing what's coming as it's coming? Versus at the end of the budget year, we see the the decisions that we had to make and the impact, but instead helping us understand those as they come. And so um I I think that's important for the district, the district administration to be able to do that so that they can see it and say, oh yeah, we're kinda getting, this is an extraordinary year, which I think the last year was. Um and and how do we look at this differently and maybe make some changes that allow us to make these changes we had to make? But you know, what unfortunately, we're we don't have millions of dol- I mean, we have millions of dollars in the bank, but maybe not. It it's really not that much when you look at the budget. So um so I think we have made tough decisions on things we could visualize. So I think as part of this too, again, is just the visualization of of those key drivers of variance in our spending. You know, sure, we could have a bad snow year, we've talked about that before. Um we could have a really hot spring and that changes our energy costs or whatever. But I think the staffing piece of of those things that come up when a child needs support and a student or a learner needs support. Um being able to to just understand what's happening there and and what our procedures are to make those determinations. While it might not reduce those costs in the beginning, it will help visualize those issues a lot sooner so that some some good heads can come together and figure figure it out. So I, you know, I think, I think we're moving in the right direction. We we had a pretty big speed bump we hit with the snowplow and we really ripped it up and threw it off the grass, it feels like, to use a metaphor.
But we didn't get stuck.
But we didn't get stuck, good point. But yeah, I I think um you know, Mr. Hilton, I look, I look forward especially with that first bud- budget revision.
Mm-hmm.
And and what you've been talking about of kind of keeping us informed of what you see for the next school year as well while we're doing that. I think that's the good first step to help us understand our situation and make decisions in a more timely fashion.
And and probably how that's gonna compare to the actual closing budget that we ended last year. Cause it's changed, right? We haven't, once we see that. Um I think the, I think the one thing, and I agree, just from my view, um from a board, I think one of our roles is to have accountability for the finances, right? The top level. And I think we can help Mr. Hilton by maybe thinking about putting some key indicators in of things we would like to see as a board to help that. For example, expenses can't exceed revenue when you have a fund balance where ours is at. You know, maybe some things like that, instead of just, and maybe that's a policy thing, I don't know, I'm not educated enough on how that flows through. But I do think we can help Mr. Hilton. Um it's not, I don't feel it's fair for us to say, hey, we got Matt who's new and he's doing really good things and we're having a new controller, they're gonna fix everything because we had a controller that was doing real good, we thought, and then we had a problem. So my opinion is it it is gonna have to be some tough decisions. Um we've talked, Matt's done a really nice job of showing us the the, and I think, Tim, you brought it up, enrollment, not only for us, but in the county, is on a steady decline. And I think that's the other thing you gotta think in the back of your mind, we do wanna be the premium school, but we also have a declining enrollment which funds our school. So you gotta have a fund balance to help bridge that gap. And I think it's important for the community to know it, that we have a challenge and that we're gonna work hard to make sure that we can still offer all those great things. But uh we also have to make sure that we set some new um lines and expectations from the board to Matt so that he knows how to to work to that, so it's not just Matt out there alone.
I'd like to touch on several of the points here. Um and the fund balance is really more than just a a rainy day fund. You know, if something breaks or there's an extraordinary expense, it really goes into everything. You know, paying paying salaries, paying uh our bills. Um on top of all that, in addition to, you know, capitalizing on any opportunities. So it it's really important, especially with a large part of that fund balance being um cash, so being liquid. Um Lynn, you you asked about how would we know when um there are issues? And I think there's a few things that are being done around that. In uh speaking with Mr. Lennar, he has already committed to specific reports that I think will highlight some of that. But um you know, in addition to keeping the lights on, redoing the budget, filing our statements with the the state, he is also instituting internal controls, internal processes. All of those things will help to um build confidence around those numbers as well. And to the point around uh KPIs, um I feel very strongly about that. And I think they should be multifaceted K uh KPIs. I know we talked about it a little bit with Mr. Hilton's goals for the year as far as outlining something like that. But they would include other things like um student achievement, maybe behavioral KPIs, you know, different different elements that should be in there. I personally would like to see um that outlined by the end of the year, including if that that means we need to have a an ad hoc committee. But um the auditor, from a financials perspective, the auditors pointed out um some very good metrics, I think, that we could use to keep things uh in track and in mind. Um and then uh Darren has been going to um several M A S B conferences and they have suggested other things from a financial perspective as well that I think could be incorporated, along with any of the other metrics that would be relevant to the school. Um regarding to uh the twelve or fifteen percent or whatever the percentage is, me personally, I think um two months of spending, like the actual dollar value of feels a little bit comfortable. But the the percentage number and how that number is used, I think is important as well. Because how how I've seen the twelve percent be used, is we kind of have that and it's in our board policies, but then we try to drive everything to that twelve percent. So I'm gonna use an example here, if we say two months is our number, I don't know what that number is, maybe it's seventy seven point five, eight eight million, whatever the number is. Um and we use that for our budget next year, we're not gonna hit the eight million next year unless something extremely significant happened. So trying to bridge that gap and getting there, it's more of like a goal versus like a policy. And I've just haven't seen that policy, the twelve percent policy working out very well as far as like how you would operationally build and manage uh the budget and finances. Um I did um take a look at Celine and, you know, Celine and and Harper have had their own challenges. But I think their board policies are something that we should take a look at regarding the budget process um and how they define things. Um you guys can take a look at them, I I mentioned them in a in the email too. But it's a policy is sixty-two thirty-one, sixty-two thirty, sixty-two twenty, and sixty-two ten. What I like about the language that they use and and kind of the the goals is that it really defines the board's role versus the superintendent or the the school's roles. And then um it also talks about the budget preparation and what's included in there. They do have a fund equity um number in here, it says um five percent above the preceding year's expenditures. I don't know if that's in line with the state or exactly what that calculation is. Anyhow, that's the number they have in there, just that baseline number. Um but I don't think that's like the real goal per se.
That's Celine's who said?
Yeah, Celine's. Um but I like what they have in here because it really talks about having a very rigorous um budget process, which I think was lacking last year. And um making sure that all of the board members really understand and can articulate what's going on with the budget and the finances. I think that's another thing we've talked about, demystifying the the financials and making it digestible and addressing um our constituents, asking and answering any questions. And basically, any board member can do it, not that they should, but that they could do it um without having an issue. And then it talks about like certain things that might be included in those types of packets. Um the last thing I I liked um in here is, and I I know we've talked about this a few times, but it does talk about maintaining, uh the finance team would maintain annually a detailed uh three year forecast of estimated expenditures and revenues. And I think that forethought and planning and at least assumptions that we can build along is gonna be required to get us from A to B in this scenario because we're not gonna be able to make it up in a year. So it's gonna take some planning over time, like what are we gonna do over the next time to do something? Maybe it's adding a new program, I don't know, to gain people, or maybe it's cutting certain expenses. But um I guess the last thing I have to say is just regarding the cost structure that I've seen. It our current cost structure seems to have gotten out of alignment on a per pupil basis over the past few years. And um you know, some costs aren't really um as evenly spread, I guess, over a a pupil count. Um you have some costs that are more fixed in nature, but um it seems to have gotten substantially out of alignment. And I I don't feel our current cost structure is currently sustainable without something else changing. Thank you.
Trustees, thank you, this was really helpful to to me and the team. What I would uh like to do, my plan on what I would do next is bring this discussion to the budget committee. That occurs a week from today, we would certainly report back out at our our next board meeting and then we will just continue this discussion as Mr. Lennar uh and I put together the the First Amendment. Um and certainly I would hope to surface some um more discreet uh goals, directives. I might think, I I have to think about how I wanna say that, uh coming out of the budget committee in a week. Thanks, Mr. Lewis.
All righty. There are no action items, so we can move to the consent agenda.
I move to approve the consent agenda, which includes minutes from the regular Board of Education meeting of October twenty-seven, twenty twenty-five. Do I hear a second?
I wasn't here, so I can't.
Oh.
Second.
Thank you.
Hey, hey, thanks, Darren. Okay, it's been moved and seconded to approve the consent agenda from October twenty-seven, twenty twenty-five. Roll call vote, uh I guess I gotta change this a little bit. Trustee Brooks.
Aye.
Trustee Simpson.
Aye.
Trustee Miller.
Aye.
Trustee McGee.
Aye.
And the chair votes aye. Uh strategic, superintendent's report, your strategic plan quarter to update, Mr. Hilton.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Lewis, thank you, trustees. Uh trustees, tonight, we are bringing forward to you for your review um our progress towards our year four strategic plan goals. Uh first quarter was the the goal setting, so what we'll do this evening is remind you of the goals that we have set inside of each of our uh five bucket areas and then we'll report out to you on the progress that occurred, has occurred over the last few months. So first up, I believe, is, yes, Megan and Sean are coming up.
So just to remind you of the goals that we set last time. So one of the things we wanna do is um develop and secure approval for a new high school business course, um which we we've started talking about, um and I'll share that with you in a minute. But we want to kinda give another opportunity for kids to explore some careers in in the business field. Um we also want to take our career corner that we worked so hard on over the past few years and start to incorporate those things into our existing curriculum, as well as partner with the ISD to provide some sort of opportunity for kids to earn some certifications or credentials in some of those soft skills, as they like to call them, or those employability skills. So those are the three objectives um under that goal area. And just to update you on where we're at with that, so Ms. Irish and I have begun to talk about what a potential business course could look like um at very early stages, but we we've kind of gone back and forth about where that would land and we think it makes the most sense offered as a senior math experience. So all seniors need to take some sort of math experience. So a lot of kids get that through the tech center, they can get that through an art course, one of our computer science courses, it's a lot more flexibility. But certainly, this course would involve some math. Um and we wanna focus on some of those life skills, budgeting, those types of things um in this class. So it makes sense to kind of offer it as a senior math elective. Um and then also, we've, you know, begin conversations with Kelly Jo Gilmore at the state about how we could um, you know, use our business partners in the in the community to get kids involved in the community, maybe for helping to market for the businesses in the community, um doing, maybe running some of their social media, um things like that. So we've just started talking about that, it's it's early, but um next thing is to kinda look at that master schedule and see where that makes sense and who is going to teach that. So we have to follow some guidelines from the state about who's highlighting. So we have to follow some guidelines from the state about who's highly qualified to teach that and what we're going to name it. So we're, we're both kind of doing our research on what makes the most sense there. And then with the career connection, so all of that, that work we've done with our, the Michigan Career Development Model, we just had a, a great PD on Halloween for our middle school and high school staff where we had a company come in and that, you know, we kind of learned about last year through the career conference. But they came in and they kind of did a model lesson for teachers of how you can simply just by, you know, incorporate what you're already doing with your lessons and have that spin of a career focused on it. So looking at some of those, those things that teachers are already doing. So we had to emphasize this over and over, you know, we're not asking you to do something more. We're asking you to take something you're already doing and talk about how it might connect to a career. The other part of that, which will be happening when they come back in January, is taking our portrait of a graduate and all of those skills that we want our students to acquire by the time they leave us, is how might we start to call out for students, you're doing this project, you're working on this. And kind of helping them see that all of those skills are connected with lessons that they're doing and just helping students realize that that's what they're doing in these lessons. So we've just kind of started that, but it was an amazing PD. It got a lot of really good feedback and we're excited for them to come back in January. And then the next slide here, so this is the learning environment and the culture. So two goals under this area. We wanted to explore a master's schedule at the middle school in particular, where we could embed some more supports in math in particular. So we talked a little bit about this last month when we talked about our math goals and our data and what we're doing with that. But we noticed that math is an area, you know, that we need to improve in. So we wanted to start focusing on how that might look in a master's schedule at the middle school. We also have been building our student leadership groups. We really value students' opinions and their input. And they are, you know, probably our biggest stakeholder in, in education. So we want to make sure that we're incorporating their voice into some of the decisions that we're making. So to update you on where we're at with that. So like I said, I talked about this a little bit last time with the data. But we have implemented a few different things as far as math intervention goes at the middle school as part of the master's schedule. So our fourth and fifth grade teachers have a very similar daily structure. And our sixth through eighth grade teachers have a very similar daily structure. So with the fourth through fifth grade teachers, they are supporting each other and providing math interventions for targeted students. So fifth grade teachers, when they have this extra chunk of time while their kids are at specials, at essentials, they are working with, they're paired up with the fourth grade teacher and they're supporting students that the teachers have identified it as needing like help with like fast facts, for example, or completing some of their work, or just providing intervention for them. And similarly, fourth grade is doing that for fifth grade. So they've paired up and they are working with fifth grade students and helping, supporting those math skills. Sixth through eighth grade, we have a study skills class that identified students are in study skills. And it's really helping them not only with study skills, like how do you stay prepared and stay organized, but helping them catch up and not get further behind. So we have a math interventionist who is supporting in those hours during the day for study skills to help support students in math. Because our study skills teachers are not all math teachers. We have art teachers doing that, you know, we have music teachers who are teaching the study skills. So it's nice to have a math professional in the class to help support those skills. And then with student leadership, couple of different ways that that's, that this looks in the district at the high school. We have the Student Advisory Group. I know Tucker has talked about that with you guys and all the input that they're giving on a monthly basis with their, their BIT team. So that's basically their building improvement team, their leadership team. The students are a part of that meeting every month. And the, this team will run things by them like schedules or school initiatives or PBIS, other things that they're doing to get the students' input on it. So that's been really great. And middle school has something very similar. They call it the Student Advisory Group and they meet one time per month as well. And they give the, um, feedback on school initiatives, particularly like PBIS. How are the lessons going? How do you like the incentives? What are you seeing in the hallways? What do we need to work on? Those types of things. At the ELCs, it looks a little bit different. They're just getting going with this. But they've provided opportunities for their third graders to take on some more leadership roles in the school, which has been really cool. I was over at Sutton the other day and I watched, you know, the third graders were, were giving the announcements for the day. So that was really exciting to see them kind of like telling their peers what exciting things were going to be happening for the day and what lunch was, those types of things. But they also are incorporating job boards where students can help support things happening in the school and have a leadership role. And they're starting to run assemblies and do fun things like that. So starting off a little slower there, but definitely looking at ways that they can do that with the young students. So that is it for us.
I was up here so you could associate. I am getting familiar with it, but she didn't wave the details.
I said, next time, he's not off the hook. He's got to talk.
Hey, hey Megan, you, can you go back to the high school business course?
Yes.
So I like the life skills focus, but isn't there a state requirement for personal finance?
There is, and we are teaching that in our economics class. So that's already being handled. All of the students need to be taking that. With economics, if they already were covering, I think there's four total personal finance standards. And already in the curriculum, we were covering three, so we just added, needed to add one more. So it made sense to keep that there. But I think there's going to probably be some overlap or repetition in some of those things. And it won't be for every student that's going to take this business course. But kids who are, you know, in the building or have an interest in those business careers, and it's going to be very targeted. We're going to probably just start with one class, have the counselors identify who they think would be a good fit. And that would also be a good fit for their senior math experience.
Thank you.
Yep. Any other questions for us?
Do we have like an accounting class at high school?
No, but we have a very robust accounting program at the Tech Center, which has been growing. That's one of the fastest growing programs they have at the Tech Center. Kids are really getting kind of interested in that. They do, you know, the kids get to do taxes and they get to do really fun stuff like that. So that program's really been. Fun stuff, I think it might be fun. Well, the kids think it's fun. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you both. Oh, we're, we're still going here, Mr. Lewis. Mr. Madison, all yours.
All right. Reminder of the objectives for this year for operations was that we were looking to continue evaluations of capital needs and estimated costs for our buildings, all the updates and, you know, the economy the way it is right now. We're also looking to develop and implement plans for next phases of building safety and security based on information provided by staff, community, and industry professionals. And then we, the last objective for this year was to increase communications to staff families and the community on infrastructure improvements and investments to increase transparency and trust. So this is a lot shorter list than I usually have, but there's a lot going on in these few bullet points here. So the big one is the continued evaluation of the community pool with structural reports expected this next week. So plan is we should have that to the board for review. And then you'll see me again next board meeting to present on the findings that we have there. The other is construction documents and RFPs being developed for the next phases of the sinking fund. In addition to the pool, we're looking ahead to summer twenty twenty-seven. And so we need to start getting those documents together. We're looking at high school and middle school roof replacements, the high school rooftop HVAC units, middle school and high school fire alarm systems. And then, as you'll see, under tennis court reconstruction, and I want to be clear on this one, we've moved this up in the list because there's a potential opportunity for a $200,000 grant with the USTA. So this is not because we feel it's the highest priority on the list, but it is an opportunity to get some money that could replace those courts. So we are working through those construction documents so we can apply for that grant. And then the last one is the website update under, is underway. We're working on right now, actually Caroline here is working with me to provide additional information that we can get on the website that shows where we're at with progress of all the sinking fund, all the documents, the reports, things that are coming. So our intention is hopefully by the first of the year to have that up where you'll have a link to the original sinking fund information and then an update link that you can look at to see what we've done so far.
Any questions for Mr. Madison? Thanks, Josh. Ms. Adamsack, good evening.
So I am here to give you an update regarding personnel and leadership. We had two objectives this year. One focused around structured offboarding process, consistent with exit interviews and other communication channels that we see. And the other one is continuing the work that we started last year with job descriptions and really the creation and also not just creation, but adding a more robust process to those, where to find those, and then how they align with our performance standards. So with our first goal area, it was important to review our current processes. The current exit interview that's linked here in the presentation is something that I built when I first joined the district in spring of twenty-two, just to get an idea of capturing that information so we can start building that data. As I was reviewing this process, it's important that it's not a process that is completely engaged just with my office or department. With this review, it's important that not only the notifications, but that communication come from additional stakeholders. So what we're going to see moving forward in this goal area is engaging those stakeholders that already have a rapport and relationship as people managers with those employees as they have those exit conversations so we can get more information than just a click of a few come, or a few questions in an exit interview that they receive. So more to come on that goal area. We're very excited on that. And then our second one and our number two bullet, or bullets here is going to be for our job descriptions. Last year, just a little recap of what we did. We have a standardized job description template now. We did an audit of all descriptions and postings and started that project of rebuilding those postings to include all of those essential function areas. Where we're going and what we are currently doing now is we're prioritizing these updates by our turnover and those roles. We're also identifying pathways for growth. So engaging those relationships that we've already built in the last three years, such as Talent Together and other resources. If we have an instructional assistant that's joined us and has an interest in career as an educator, how can we help facilitate that within our own district? Just to kind of toot our own horn in that aspect, for the last three years that Talent Together has been here, we have not only had people in the program, we have had an apprentice in one of our buildings all three of those years. So we have one teacher, Jamie Function, who is working in the middle school. Another teacher that finished her apprenticeship last year that is finishing up a couple school-related items so she can become certified and we hope to welcome her in the next several months as we have new openings available. And then we have another woman from another district that was not hosting. And so we were able to bring her on and host her as her apprenticeship. And she is with Mrs. Northrup. She is a second year mentor teacher for us with Talent Together. So we're seeing great things with that program. So we're looking to expand that and talk about how we can go ahead and facilitate those pathways within our job descriptions. So it's something when someone is interested in joining our district, they see how we want to engage and truly grow with those individuals. And then again, as we have talked about before, what do those performance metrics look like in job or in evaluations and competencies that match these new job descriptions as well? So a lot of work to be done still, but we're making some great progress with this. Any questions? Thank you so much.
I have one question. Can you go, can you go back to the very first page?
Yeah.
In the implement effective systems, and I don't know if this goes through your group, so if it doesn't, just say, move on. But do we do building surveys to get the climate of each building on a regular basis and report that out to get a, kind of, we get exit interviews, but sometimes that's too late, right? So do we do other things to do proactively?
Yes, at the building level, they do, each year.
Each year, okay. Thank you.
No problem. Any other questions? Thank you so much.
Okay, trustees, in the goal area around communications and community engagement, certainly we are continuing with all of our efforts to tell our story in multiple platforms. We will be talking very soon, a lot more about the, the pool and the status of the pool. We've begun to do some work around brand development and a branding kit, as well as the strategic plan, review, and update. And those were essentially the, the four objectives inside of communications and community engagement that we set for this year. So just a few highlights, I, I would share with you that I think we've certainly continued to tell the story of our schools. And we've done that through events such as the, the Cambrian performances to the music and band concerts at the TCA and in our schools, to field trips and experiential learning, to service projects, to athletic achievements, to our staff shout-out series. We're, we're continuing to, to tell the, the good news of our school district. So coming soon, as Mr. Madison shared a little bit, is the Tecumseh Community Memorial Pool update, as well as then the, the sinking fund implementation website. As we get going, this website will, will represent another communication tool and community engagement effort so that we can really both tell the, tell and show the story of the sinking fund dollars at work in our community. Not that it's exciting to be doing roofs and that sort of thing, but, but they need to be done. And so we're going to show and tell the work of this being done. And then trustees, with these last two items, I think that I would just say that they kind of go together. We're, we're having a discussion regarding our strategic plan, review, and community engagement. But we're also working on some, some brand development. So I'm going to say more about brand development over time, but I want you to know this for now. Our strategy is really focusing on building a strong presence and continuing to strengthen that presence online and in the community, which is closely aligned with our mission, vision, belief statements, and strategic focus. I think you know this. And one logo that I have particularly liked, you've seen it because I've been using it. One logo that I've particularly liked that has come out of some of the branding kit work that we've been doing that I think captures our community spirit is this one. And when I look at this, and I'm playing with some of this language here, and I'm, I'm eventually going to put this out and ask students and ask staff and parents and community members. I think that this logo really represents unity and a shared identity, if you will. It represents more than just school, school pride. I think it embodies the spirit of our community coming together as one. And the hashtag one tribe speaks to the idea that every student, staff member, family member, and community, and community member is part of something larger than themselves. And it symbolizes the strength, tradition, and collective identity that binds Tecumseh together. So I'm continuing to play with some language there and I will be engaging our community in that as we get going. I want to give you that update tonight. But certainly, I'm going to say much more about this over the course of the next three months and certainly when we report back at quarter three update. So I'll stop here and take any questions for, uh, uh, community engagement and communications or any questions, comments in general.
I just, I already told you privately, but I will say it at the table. I love that logo. I think that is genius.
I have a, a comment as well. I like the logo as well. I think one thing about a marketing strategy is protecting assets. And so, um, we are very open and, um, in letting the use of the T be utilized. And so, um, sometimes when I see the use in the community, I wonder if that's what, i- is it safe for the school district to have it used that way? Is it, is it saying that the school district is supporting something or someone that, that really it's not the place of the school district to support? I think also that it's being used in the right way. Even just in, in messaging on T-shirts and those types of things. It's allowed out into the terra firma a little too much. So not to lock it down by any stretch of the imagination, but what are some guardrails we can put around the usage of the T is, is something to think about.
You have to trademark it. Simple as that. You have to trademark it, so, yep. If someone already has it, but I doubt it, but then.
I figured you did it.
No, I did not. I've got one I'll sell you guys.
I agree with what you're saying there, Lynn. Although I think there's a, in our position as a community trust, there's also, we want to let people use it, right? To some, but your point that, well, maybe we don't want it used in every situation is well taken. And I, you know, I don't. And I, you know, I don't pretend to know where the line is on it, but, um, you know, I think that, um, you know, when you see people with, whether it's T-shirts or signs with the logo out in the community, that's a boon for the district. And, and to the extent that it's being used in a way that represents the district and the community with pride, I, I think it's great. Though it would be probably useful to at least have the capacity to say, we don't want it used in that situation if, if we're seeing it associated negatively, right? But, you know, I think having the, having the school's, you know, name be both accessible and out there for groups is, is probably a net positive overall.
Yeah, there's definitely a balance. I think there are some things that are, could be construed legally as support that we have to be careful about.
Yeah, and I, that I think is a, is a fair point that has to be considered.
But there's probably somebody watching this that now is filling out a trademark application.
Good job, Tim.
I'd like to see the students and staff at the buildings, the two elementaries and middle school and high school, make the, you know, see them vote on it. And I don't know if there should be any, it's gotta be one logo, but I mean, some input from the students and the staff, and then we get two or three options and we, I mean, they'll come to it. This is number one, number two, number three, and as long as we don't have any hiccups like Lynn's talking about, let's go with that. Because they're the ones we wanna have advertise and sell this. Somebody that's on the board trying to promote it isn't gonna do it like kids that are excited about it. And the staff members, I mean, they sell things.
I don't know if we want to get into the legal control of, of brand usage and logo usage that can be expensive quickly. But what can be done is brand standards, and there's, there's many templates out there. If you need one, I can provide one. Our company does that as well. But, you know, you can say, here are our color codes, here are the font types, here, here are where we don't want it used, and here where it, you know, would be good uses. So it, it details a whole bunch of different things, but that's pretty reasonable to do.
Yep, absolutely.
And make it accessible. When I was looking for the T, I didn't know if we could just snip it off or if we could use it, but if we say, hey, you can use these, and here's how you use them, and here they are in various different formats, you know, PDF to, you know, different types of files, I think it will help with that as well.
I thought at some point we had asked the policy committee to look at that.
Well, we certainly can.
So policy committee, could you look at that?
Seems like something we could look at.
I, I don't remember that either, to be honest.
It would have been probably last December.
Oh, really? Maybe we were not.
Yeah, that was, I was, but I'll just, you know, I'll blame somebody, I don't know.
Okay, thank you, trustees. Mr. Lewis, back to you.
Okay, I didn't schedule the next agenda.
Trustees, certainly we will have a number of items for the next agenda, from some good news reports to certainly we're hoping to bring forward a, a report from Mr. Madison around the pool and where things stand.
Okay, or better comments and discussion.
I have a few general comments here to, since I wasn't here last week or last meeting. I'm trying not to make up for lost time by going on real long, but first of all, thank you to Mr. Hilton's school for finally getting my son to rake along. It wasn't mine, but I feel like it's progress. And it was, I think it's, those are really cool programs. You know, and I, I wrote that down about the twenty-five years that they've been doing it. I think that's a neat thing. Good for the kids. It's good for the people in the community who, who need the help. And it's a cool thing to have our students visibly out there, being an active part of the community. So I, I think that's great. And I just kinda wanted to recognize that. The other kinda topic, I, I wanted to say a few things from a general point of view about the, the financial problems and the discussion that surrounded it. Not from the point of view of any specific financial direction, but just in terms of generally how we're approaching this as a problem. Our, I think overall that I, like everyone on the board, was kinda taken aback at what happened. You know, we, we sort of trust the information that we're given and, and we use that. But I think it's easy to be a little overreactive here. We have all, I think, to some degree, expressed confidence in the direction that this district has been moving over the last couple of years. And that is the direction that we're moving in. It's not the case that all of us were wrong about everything. And however frustrated it is to have to clean up a money problem, and that is frustrating, we have the, the same great staff, the same great students, the same supportive community, and, and I wanna emphasize this, the same great leadership. I have an immense amount of confidence in Mr. Hilton's leadership, both in the, the plans and the direction that he has laid out, and the things that he has done in the time that he's been here. And I think as much as we need to get into the nitty-gritty and have the type of discussion we did today about, you know, specific fund balance targets, what the policy needs to be, how we, um, hold ourselves accountable to meeting that, it is not time to burn things down and start over. We remain, um, as a district, in a good position to meet our students' needs, and I think continue to move in a positive overall direction. And I get nervous about, uh, the idea of, um, sort of reaction to checkboxes. I think we should, as a board and as a community, slow down and take our time to look at both where problems occurred, what steps will address those problems that occur? Just doing stuff isn't helpful, right? Let's tailor what we do to address the issues that we've had. And let's trust the leadership that we put in place as a board to carry the district forward. And I think if whatever specific difference you may have with policy or with decisions that are made, remembering that everybody, everybody here in this room is here because they care about this district, they care about the students, and they are working hard for a good outcome for those students. Where disagreement occurs, those are matters of detail that don't need to be tonal. And I, I have been concerned about the direction of the tone of this discussion, and I, I hope that, um, the tone of today's discussion, which was, I think, detail and, and productive-based, I, I, I hope we can carry that forward. And that's all, Sam.
Well said.
If I can, I will never say anything as eloquently as Dr. Martinez does. So I appreciate you, Jacob. I had a similar comment, again, like Dr. Martinez. I wasn't here at the last board meeting. I apologize. I'm welcoming a few hundred of my closest supply base friends to an event next week, and I had to make sure we were ready. So I was not able to attend, but I did watch the recording. And I did have some, um, some constituents call me with concern. Just maybe to build up upon Dr. Martinez's comments, I think we need to remember that we are all elected. And in the case of an appointment, elected officials make those appointments. And so, you know, we all, at the end of an election, regardless of vote count, are equal at this table. And so, Mr. Lewis has some unique responsibilities as board president, but one of which is the very difficult job of being the voice of the board. But we are all one-seventh. And we all bring to this table and to the committees we sit on, and to the discussions that we have, our own set of experiences that make us stronger. And sometimes I feel like we don't respect those amongst each other. And we sometimes feel like we're the only ones that know. And we're all at different stages of knowing. Mrs. Brooks and I have hundreds of hours of credit with MSBE. I'm, I'm one course away, hopefully in February, to get in the finance certification, working on it. And there are some of us that are just starting that journey, but that's okay. Our, our roles are to kinda help each other understand and to come to consensus together, to collaborate together, to work together. Because at the end of the day, this is about my third or fourth iteration of a school board, I, of this school board that I have served on in the last seven years. If you wanna know how often the board changes. But guess what? At the end of the day, they don't remember the board that I sat on with Roger Hart and Steve Lynn. They don't name the names. They just call us the school board. And so, we have to behave in a way that we are a unified board. We're gonna have disagreements. We're gonna have discussions. Those are good. Those are healthy.
Absolutely.
I've sat on other boards where we didn't have any of that. That's what a yes board is called. But we have to acknowledge each other and our capabilities and our knowledge, and we have to start, we have to continue to grow in our ability to collaborate together for the benefit of Tecumseh Public Schools. And so, I think tonight was an excellent discussion. I think everybody was able to share their information and share their knowledge and share their viewpoints in a succinct and concise way where the community can see it. They can see us functioning. We're gonna have meetings that are good. We're gonna have meetings that are more difficult. But, but that's, you know, after watching the last meeting, I, I was concerned at our, at the collaborative nature of our board. And ultimately, again, we're all just one-seventh. None of us have more power than the other, and none of us have more answers than the other on any given Monday night. So I certainly don't. So I wanna thank you all for your service. It's, it, it takes a lot to step up and run for a school board, and it takes a lot of work that the public doesn't see. And I know that every single person sitting at this board table, to Mr. or to Dr. Martinez's point, I know why you all joined the board, and that's why I am honored to serve on the board with all of you. And so, I just, you know, this is a tough spot, and we gotta talk about money, but I, I'm kind of of the same, and we have to have money to move the, the district forward. But I really liked things like the AP discussion too, because I think that's, that's what we can do. That, those are the things that, that will really push us forward. So, thanks for listening.
Anyone else?
I like, I like what, what Dr. Martinez said. And personally, I, I spent many, many hours just trying to understand what my role is as a board member. Went to, went and reviewed the MSBO information, actually had a call with the MSBE to educate myself and, and counsel with them to make sure what I was thinking or what I was doing was correct. And the one thing they pointed me to was the, the MSBO fund balance direction for school boards. One of the things in the sentence, and I can send it to everyone, is the board realizes responsibilities under law to maintain a balanced, non-deficit financial condition for the district so that the district does not find itself in a serious financial problem. So it's not all Matt's responsibility. It's our responsibility by law. And our job is to make sure that we don't run a deficit, not only to budget, but actual results to what we said we were gonna do. And unfortunately, we have been doing that. So I do feel that you've gotta have these tough discussions. I do have all the confidence in the world in Matt, but I also feel bad that Matt is facing this situation on the fund balance. So I would recommend also to take some time to go and read and educate. If you haven't, or if you've done it a long time ago, it's always helpful to go back. I, I went through the finance class twice now, just to try to make sure I didn't miss anything, because it is a, Tim's been saying it, it's totally different, and it is. It's taken me ten months to get my head wrapped around what is a budget. But I think the key point is we do have responsibility to make sure we don't run into deficit and that we, we manage and help Matt through that. So it is tough discussions. It is frustrating. But at the end of the day, I think everybody at this table has the best interest of the school and the kids and, and in our interest, and that's the most important thing. I, I'm not bringing it up, like I said earlier, I don't really care about the history. I just know where we're at today, and it's gotta get better. So I look forward to working with everyone on that and coming up with some solutions and, and going forward with it.
Let's just remember we didn't have a deficit.
Right.
Our expenses were more than our revenue.
Our budget was not correct, but we still put two hundred thousand into our fund balance.
That, but that isn't, I'm, I'm saying the last three years before this, that had, that result hasn't been posted yet. So I'm just, the twenty-four, twenty-three, and twenty-two year, we had three years of expenses more than our revenue.
I just want the public to know we didn't have a deficit this year.
This year. Yeah, that's what I said. We put, we actually put money in our fund balance, which was good.
We just gotta be careful on the word that we say.
Right.
But it's also important for, you know, it's public knowledge. Everyone go look. We've had expenses higher than our revenues.
I think all trustee Miller is saying is reminding us of our responsibility. Every year is different. Unfortunately, the funding every year is structured differently, and different things happen every year, enrollment and such. But I, I appreciate trustee Miller kind of bringing us back to that goal moving forward.
I have a few items here.
Sure, yeah.
I know we're running late, but there's a couple of really great things that I think are happening in the past week. This weekend, I was at the LASD for a Sleep and Heavenly Peace Project, which is building beds for kids that don't have it. The Monroe chapter has a very strong chapter, and they were basically trying to create like a satellite or an independent structure here in, in Lenawee County. And the fifty beds that we built were already taken by people, and it wasn't even advertised in Lenawee County. So I'm excited about this.
I'm sorry. What was the name of the group?
Sleep and Heavenly Peace.
Sleep and Heav- okay. Yeah, I had a hard time hearing you.
Hopefully you can hear me okay.
Yeah.
So I, I'm really excited about that being offered here in Lenawee County, but I'm also always simply amazed by the LASD and the facilities and what's the and the facilities and what's there and the people running it and, and organizing it. Mr. Murray greeted us and he was phenomenal as well as the, the facility is always clean and, um, we had all the right tools and it was just really great. Also, something that happened in the last couple of days was, uh, there was an equations tournament and our math rock stars just continue to dominate in that field. First in divisions one, three, and four, um, placed first with the middle school and second in division two for the high school. Divisions one, two, and three placed first. So just extraordinary performance there. We, uh, trustee Brooks and, and Mr. Hilton and myself attended, uh, an LASD school board, uh, meeting. And there was a presentation given by the MSB. I just wanted to call up a couple of key points from that. And in here, she talks in the, um, the presentation was about guiding public schools for increasing student achievement. But it really, um, had applications outside of achievement in general. She mentioned, uh, what gets monitored gets done, and I kinda like that phrase. And, um, she also added that it need to be monitored regularly. So I think, um, you know, that should be one of our guiding principles as we continue on. Another thing is, um, she mentioned, we let others tell our story and we know what they're saying. So we just need to kind of continue on with the communication. I'll say another point here about communication in a minute here. She also talked about holding the system accountable through evidence, and I know we added that evidence, uh, based element to our norms. So I think that's really great. And, uh, we also talked about, um, putting in place some multifaceted KPIs. And I, I think that's along the, the same realm there. And then lastly, she mentioned that we need to ensure systems are in place for two-way feedback with stakeholders that are both productive and proactive. And she kind of joked about it a little bit, but I think it's, um, very close to heart. She, she said, you know, we're really good as schools in, um, communicating when we need money. So similar to the sinking fund, we had presentations, lots of outreach, um, et cetera. And just kind of keeping that momentum going on just general topics, I think is helpful. The last thing I wanted to mention is, um, some of you may or may not know, uh, Mr. Mike Aaron. He is, um, he has been a very important part of Tecumseh's history. And, uh, this year marks his 60th anniversary with schools. Right now, he's a principal at Bretton Deerfield, but if you see him out, just, you know, kinda thank him for his service. That doesn't seem mathematically possible, but, um, it's really impressive and he has a, a great heart. So, thank you.
He's so old, he was my principal. Anybody else?
Just gonna clarify that it was LCASB.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, Darren, you, when you spoke about students making, or, sorry, teachers driving curriculum and how good that was. In a lot of schools and rural districts like we have, they don't have AP classes. Just people don't wanna teach AP. That happened here when AP in the 90s, when AP was starting to blossom. People didn't wanna do it because it's a lot more work. You start earlier in the year. You got no extra remittance for that. We've changed that as a board, um, so that they get supported financially because you start generally in, right after the 4th of July, you'll get your set of expectations that you have, or standards that you have to teach. And there is no book. You have to go through and break all that out. And I, I, in northern Michigan, central, um, rural Michigan, most all their AP courses are a lot of them, they're all just run through the ISD cause they don't, and it, it tear, it takes that group of kids out of that building, which isn't really, it's not good for like the school spirit. So to have teachers like that is, is where it's really a blessing to have people like that. It gives our students here four tracks. I mean, kids can go to, go through, um, VOTech, the tech center. It's been VOTech forever, but it's the tech center and, and they can get CTE type classes. We've instituted some here. They can just become a regular high school graduate if they want to. They can do dual enrollment. They can take the AP options. So as far as providing opportunities for kids, especially at the high school, we, we've met that pretty well. And we didn't just start it either. So I'm not, this isn't breaking my arm, patting myself on the back. We've had a lot of that stuff going on here for a long time. But that's important that we do that and, and that we recognize our teachers and staff who put that, go that extra mile. And then the other nice thing, I went to the veterans', uh, breakfast last Friday. That's my second I've ever been. And, uh, it was, uh, I, I, I didn't know, but the teachers, I had my grandkids send them down there so they could be with me, which that was kinda nice. But more than that, there were guys that, I, I guess, cause I'm so old, I look like I could've been in Vietnam. They said, well, you in Vietnam? No, well, I was in high school when that, and by the, but thanks for asking. But I, I, those guys, um, a couple of them were real emotional when they, when our bands were playing, uh, the, our orchestra, our choir, our band playing music. Kelly McKincheck, uh, someone asked her if she had kids that could play taps. I don't know if it was one of those guys or not. But, um, she, she told me that she just grabbed three boys and said, you guys wanna try and do this? And they said, you're, they hadn't played it at all. 10 minutes later, they're playing in front of everybody. And because, again, I don't know why I was at the south end of the cafeteria where those guys were at, you know? The one guy, he didn't have a uniform. He just had his metal bars. He had a Purple Heart, two Bronze Stars with valor. So you don't get those by just driving around the Jeep. And, uh, when that was, he had his granddaughter, his hand on her shoulder, and tears were coming down his face. And I'm old enough to remember when those guys came home, they weren't greeted the best. And what our, I think what our kids did and, and the leadership of the teachers who put that together, there was a little bit of healing there for some people that, you know, they didn't have that when they came in. And my grandsons were there and they're like, hey, Grandpa, you know, that, that guy over there, he's crying. You know why? And I said, I'll tell you about it tomorrow morning, cause I was having him over for breakfast. So I, I, I tried to capture it with some YouTube videos and stuff to show them how, how it was when they came home. And it was like that when you came back from the war? Nah, I didn't have that big of a role in it, but it was, it was just moving. And, and I, you know, when I went the first time, it was like, I knew all those people there and it, but I didn't see that kind of raw emotion. And I, cause I just kinda hung around with the teachers I had that were veterans and, and, uh, that, that was big. I mean, that, there were, it was, it was hard to get enough people into that cafeteria. It was, it was just amazing what they did. Again, all volunteer stuff. And, uh, Chris and, um, Lisa were down there and Aaron and it just, it was just amazing what they did for the, and it, for me, it was just for me, the same awareness that I, I, what took me back to the 1970s, you know, the guy who was, a friend of mine, we went to the elementary. He, he got on the bus one day. He was a mess. His brother had been killed in Vietnam. He found out at four o'clock that morning. His parents just sent him to school. They didn't know else to do with him. And, and my next door neighbor, some of you I know, you'd know their family, Darren, I mean, he just got back from Marine Corps. He was my next door neighbor and he, he was a wreck for a while, just getting, you know, wound down, cause he was over there for the Tet Offensive. And it, I, just, if they did something like that for those people, it's priceless for what they did as being ambassadors for our community. And it wasn't, it was the parents who organized it, but it gets the kids who put the smile on people's faces, and that's what we gotta always remember. You know, the kids here are pretty innocent, especially at that level. And all we gotta do is work hard to give them the best they can be. So with that, I'm, I'm, uh, looking for a motion to adjourn.
Real quick, before you get into your motion there, two things. One, on the eve of Veterans Day, thank you for your service. I also remember you were part of the raking run this year?
I was.
Yeah. Did, did you have some experiences with that?
I had fun. I did. I, I, I was, I, I used to love the rake a difference day. I was, it was my first year as assistant principal to middle school. So 96, 9, Paul 96 was the first year they did it. It was, it was, it was always a hoot. Two teachers, Fred Jastrow, Rose Arnold, they thought that would be a great idea. Everybody just took it and ran. And the community loved it and, and I loved it, cause it was, uh, the kids who, you know, sit in class and aren't necessarily good at, at, at taking notes or just reading stuff out of a book, they love raking leaves. I mean, they're busy, they're engaged, and they're doing it for other people. And if, you know, something like the lady we went to this year, soon as she popped out, those doughnuts boys, she, she had a lot more motivation from some of the boys. Says, you guys get this section done. I got these. Zoom. And you couldn't, you couldn't have moved any leaves faster with these.
And there was one other event you attended this week that's probably a good thing to mention.
I did?
You did. Our volleyball team.
Oh, absolutely. The, the district volleyball championship. And I, I can't go tomorrow night now, cause my wife was texting me. It looks like her plane's gonna be delayed. So I, I can't go up and watch the first game of the regionals tomorrow. They're at seven o'clock in Charlotte, if anybody wants to go.
That's Dr. Martinez's son at the place with doughnuts.
He was not. I had, what grade's he in?
He is, uh, he's in 10th.
Okay. Seventh grade I was with, or no, they're eighth grader, eighth grader that I had.
Okay, yeah, he, he's in the high school group now, but, um, they had, he was with Key Club kids and they were doing a after-school, um, raking thing. And it, it was, he's a computer kid, right? I mean, and like getting him out and doing something, I, that's an accomplishment. It's more than I've been able to do recently, so, props to you.
All right. With that, I will make a motion to adjourn.
All right. Okay, then, motion and second to adjourn the meeting. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye?